To the state. With that, I will now call this evening's docket. I will ask attorneys to please come to the lectern to enter your appearances. We will call case number 126732, Brenda Zaragoza versus the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County.
Good evening, Your Honors. My name is Rick Moorefield, and I represent Brenda Zaragoza, the appellant and plaintiff. And we are ready for argument. And we would request three minutes rebuttal time.
Three minutes is granted. Thank you.
May it please the Court, Andrew Holder, on behalf of the Appellate, the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas, present and ready for argument.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. Mr. Moorefield, you may begin your argument when you are ready.
May it please the Court. Your Honors, this case is about restoring fidelity to the Constitution of the State of Kansas, to the text of the Kansas Tort Claims Act, to fair procedures that have been put in place by this court that need to be followed in the district courts of this state. And this case is also about accountability for government negligence. Brenda Zaragoza was injured, suffered serious injuries, when she was leaving defendant's library. She was walking to her car on a public sidewalk, stepped onto the public parking lot, and fell on an unmarked, dangerous, inconspicuous slope in the lot. The defendant knew about this danger. We are here because the Johnson County District Court granted summary judgment to the defendant on the basis that the defendant's parking lot was immune from liability under the Kansas Tort Claims Act recreational use immunity. The District Court applied the recreational use immunity to a public parking lot that had never been used or intended for any recreational purpose. The Court of Appeals upheld the District Court. So I'm here today to ask this court to overrule the Court of Appeals in the Johnson County District Court for three reasons. First, the recreational use immunity statute is facially unconstitutional. It violates both Section 5 and Section 18 of the Kansas Constitution by eliminating a remedy and a right to jury trial for governmental negligence, a right that has been recognized in this state since before Kansas became a state. We're asking the court to find that just this one particular section of the Kansas Tort Claims Act is not faithful to the Constitution. But regardless of the unconstitutional nature of this statute, the Kansas courts have stretched and distorted the plain language of the recreational use immunity statute to the point that its scope is unrecognizable. So we're asking this court, at the very least, to restore fidelity to the language chosen by the Kansas Legislature. Currently, there are no real guiding principles in place that provide any guardrails that would, for example, prevent the division of motor vehicles from putting artwork on its walls and then claiming governmental immunity from negligence. The last 50 years of case law has transformed a narrow exception to liability into a broad shield that has closed the courthouse doors for Brenda Zaragoza. Additionally, the last point is that the District Court violated established court rules and case law by granting summary judgment by making inferences in favor of the moving party. The court relied on inferences and also on this interpretation of the recreational use immunity statute. From a procedural fidelity standpoint, defendant failed to explicitly plead the recreational use immunity in its answer. It generally pled the Kansas Tort Claims Act. In its responses to discovery, it did not identify anything relating to the recreational use immunity. Defendant denied any knowledge of the dangerous condition until its corporate representative testified that what had been provided in discovery before was not true.
You described the scope as unrecognizable.
Yes.
And tell us the path, how we would get there to your position, given what we did in Lane and Poston and a whole myriad of cases since this exception has been recognized. Why now? Why not then? And how do we get there?
I think what happened, Your Honor, was a series of small missteps that led to the place that we are today that requires correction. And so one of the first cases where the court expanded the recreational immunity, mind you, the statute says that there will be immunity for parks, playgrounds, and open areas permitted or intended for recreational use. And in the context, parks, playgrounds, and open areas, that sounds like we're talking about soccer fields, football fields, outdoor basketball courts, pickleball courts, you name it.
Would you say it was a mistake, then, to include interior recreational facilities like gymnasiums?
Absolutely.
That was one of our first missteps, right?
I believe that was the first misstep, and I believe, I understand the rationale behind that step. But one of the things that was so interesting in that case is the court discussed what Illinois had done and talked about an Illinois case and talked about the Illinois statute. But the Illinois statute that led to the Illinois decision specifically included indoor areas. And so it wasn't really good support for taking this kind of an interpretation of the recreational use immunity statute here. The court said, well, it would make sense to include an indoor gymnasium, but that's not what the legislature said, and that's not what the context provided.
The hard part here is that it's not maybe what the legislature said, but we're having, at least I'm having trouble discerning what the legislature meant. There really isn't a very good record about how expansive is this recreational use. What did they mean by park, playground, or open area for recreational purposes? It really wasn't discussed. Did they mean football fields? Did they mean just parks or any place where recreation can be partaken in? There really isn't much record there for us to go back to, to look and see if there's ambiguity.
Well, and I agree, Your Honor. In fact, the legislative history is really scant. In fact, this recreational immunity was a late addition to the Kansas Tort Claims Act. So there's virtually nothing in there about it.
Let me just ask a quick question. It comes off of Justice Rosen's. So we have 50 years where, from your perspective, the court has misstepped, included the inside. But if that wasn't the legislature's intent, why wouldn't they have changed the statute?
I think that presumes that the legislature is reading every Kansas Supreme Court decision, that it doesn't have other issues, whether it's for political or practical reasons it has to consider. I think the issue is, what did they say? And they did not say, they did not say anything about interior spaces.
And I take it you define open as drawing a contrast between interior and exterior, having walls, having some kind of containment?
I do. I mean, and particularly in this context, because it's in the context of the words park, playground, open area. So if we look at kind of the logical relationship of those words, open area would seem to be something like a park or a playground. These are three things of the same character.
That's one thing, that's one rule we look at when construing a statute. Another is that we look to common definitions. And isn't a common definition of open consistent with saying it's open to the public? The public can come to enjoy whatever recreational activity might be, wherever that might be?
Well, I think we do have to look at that word in the context in which it was provided. And one of the things I provided in my brief is some references to what other states have said about the term open area, because we have to look at those two words together. It's not just the word open, but it's the word open area. And so if you look at what others, how those terms have been interpreted, and then particularly in this situation where the seeming basis for expanding this to include an indoor gymnasium was an Illinois case and statute that specifically said, we're including enclosed buildings and educational facilities, neither of which was mentioned here. And I think one of the things that's important here, because this has been a steady progression, but if we look at that Jackson, Exrel, Essien versus USD 259 case, the plaintiff's attorney apparently raised a concern that one day a cafeteria or a library might be considered a recreational facility. And the court dismissed that concern and said, we're not saying anything other than gymnasiums. Well, fast forward a few years, and we have a commons area at a high school that is now considered a recreational use. We now have, in the Zaragoza case, a declaration that a public library is a recreational space. And now we've got a parking lot, which has never been used or intended for recreation, that happens to be adjacent to the library, and now it is brought into the recreational immunity exception. So if we look, we have to ask the question, is the public parking lot, is the public sidewalk where Brenda Zaragoza fell, is it a park, playground, or open area permitted or intended for recreational use?
But recreation doesn't have to be physically active, does it? What would you say to someone like me who was born with dislocated hips? And so recreation, to me, has always been something that involves sitting down, like reading and playing the piano and doing that. You don't need a large area, but open area for recreation like that is not precluded by the statute, is it?
It's not precluded, but we have to look at what the purpose was. If we go back to the, I'll probably pronounce it wrong, but the Bolden versus University of Kansas case, this court talked about how the purpose of this recreational use immunity was because recreation involves a risk of injury. And there was a desire to encourage the Kansas government and municipalities and states and counties to provide recreational facilities where there is a risk of injury.
But the statute doesn't say that. The statute doesn't say you have to have a risk of injury to be recreational.
That's what this court has said, though, and that that was the purpose of it, because we have to look at, from a public policy perspective. If we're talking about a public library, what's the risk of injury and liability? I mean, I suppose you could drop a book and hurt yourself or get a paper cut, but a library is not a facility much different than a school in the sense that there's not a great risk for the government. But if the government's going to make tennis courts or swimming pools or soccer fields, people break legs, people suffer serious injuries. And so the argument was that a recreational use immunity provides the government with some protection in exchange for providing these kinds of opportunities for people. And a public library is something of an entirely different nature. And that, and this expansion of the recreational use immunity ties into one of the reasons why this statute, why we're claiming this statute is unconstitutional. Because what it's done is it's taken away Brenda Zaragoza's remedy and a right to a jury trial for an injury happening on a public sidewalk and parking lot, even though causes of action for that have been recognized since the Casey case, since Atchison versus Chalice, Jansen versus the City of Atchison. We look at all these cases where Kansas courts have said government entities have liability for injuries that occur on their streets, their sidewalks, and there's no dispute about that.
Are those cases tort claims act cases?
They are not tort claims act cases, and I would argue that the recreational use immunity violates Section 5 and Section 18 of the Constitution because those causes of actions were recognized.
How were they, just to educate me a little bit, how were they recognized? With respect to the sovereign immunity of the state of Kansas?
Well, those cases acknowledged the right of a Kansas citizen to sue a governmental entity for negligence in maintaining public property.
Without any statute?
Without any statute. And to put a statute in place that takes away that right, takes away both the right and the remedy that Section 5 and Section 18 of the Constitution guarantee.
Let me just.
That case based upon, the suit was against a municipality incorporated city. And wasn't that case based upon the rationale that the city charter had assumed the duty? Do you have any case that shows us the similar liability for a county or another entity that is not incorporated by charter?
We have, the cases that I've cited are all cities, but what we also find, if we move forward in time to this court's case of Carol v. Kittle, we see that this court determined in that case that all governmental entities should be treated the same, that there shouldn't be any distinction between those different types of entities. And then we also have KSA 12-1223 in this case, where, which by legislative grant, the defendant can sue and be sued. So there isn't any question about the amendability of the defendant to sue.
No, but the issue is the duty, I think, is part of that rationale, the case you cited.
Yes.
Andrew, I interrupted you. Did you have?
Oh, no, I just want to make sure I understand your position under the, you know, under the statutory language. So it's your position that we should not use, even though recreation is not defined in the statute, that we should go to an Illinois statute and compare that instead of consulting a dictionary to find out what the common usage is of the word recreation? Is that right?
No, that's not what I'm saying. In fact, the Illinois statute doesn't really have any bearing in our situation, other than the fact that it was discussed in one of this court's cases, along with an Illinois case. When this court was expanding the recreational use immunity, it made reference to this Illinois case and this Illinois statute. The only point I'm making is the Illinois statute explicitly included the things that this court's including by fiat.
But why, but it's your position we shouldn't just use, as Justice Wilson said, the ordinary and common definition of recreation?
Not when we look at what this court has said the purpose of that statute is, which is, it talks, in that Bolden case I talked about, you know, the purpose of a recreational use immunity statute is to encourage the governmental entities to provide these opportunities.
Okay, so along with that, is it your position that because a swimming pool at Tomahawk Ridge, not Tomahawk Ridge, the one on Metcalf, it has an indoor swimming pool, okay? And that should not fall under the immunity, but an outside swimming pool would?
I would agree with that based on the way the statute is drafted, but I will absolutely agree with you that an indoor swimming pool or an outdoor swimming pool, they're both recreational. And.
You're saying because it's indoor, under your definition of open area, it doesn't qualify, right?
That's correct.
And then the third thing is, if you have an outdoor swimming pool and there's a parking lot, is it your position that that parking lot is not integral to the function of the outdoor swimming pool?
It's my position that there is no public policy reason to extend the immunity beyond the recreational use area, that there has never been any indication that states, municipalities, or counties are unwilling to build sidewalks, parking lots, streets.
What's the point of a parking lot if it's not a parking lot for the outdoor swimming pool?
That's true, but there is no rational basis for the government to make itself immune from injuries that occur in a parking lot, simply because it happens to be adjacent to a swimming pool as opposed to.
But is the swimming pool a parking lot?
But it's a parking lot. And I think that's the point I'm trying to make. If we, the DMV parking lot should not be treated differently than the swimming pool parking lot. Neither one of them are recreational.
But our case law says that integral to the function of the qualifying property. So is the parking lot to an outside swimming pool integral to the function of the outside swimming pool?
Well, I think we would need some evidence or some additional facts. I mean, for example, is it a shared parking lot with a?
Let's say it's not.
Okay, then it probably, it potentially is integral?
It's potentially what?
It's potentially integral to that swimming pool, certainly. And that's, Your Honor, you know, that's what I'm asking this court to change, is that rule that something that is deemed somehow to be integral should not receive the recreational use immunity because it isn't, in fact, recreational. There's.
If you circle around to your argument that the most important thing to the legislature is that government not incur liability for these recreational things, then if you don't include the parking lot, aren't you giving the legislature just another reason to say, forget it, we're not going to have swimming pools because we might be held liable, and build your own swimming pool. We're not going to have libraries because somebody might have a book dropped on them. So forget it, have your own private libraries. Why would they, why would they have any incentive to have anything that is recreational if you don't also include the parking lot?
There's really no indication that cities, counties, municipalities have ever had any reluctance to build sidewalks, parking lots, et cetera, because of the liability issues. And it's a very, excuse me, it's a very limited type of liability they face. I mean, they're simply asked to exercise due care and not creating a problem. If we start saying that parking lots, if they're next to a recreational facility, have immunity, then when cities and counties have a budget crisis, they have an incentive to say, well, let's not fix the parking lot by the pool because we've got a free pass there. We only have to not be grossly and wantonly negligent. So we don't have to fix all the potholes. Let's just fix the ones and the ones where we can get sued. And the general public, and frankly, you could take somebody, you could take the top law student, frankly, you could probably take most of the lawyers in town, show them that recreational use immunity statute and ask them if that applies to a parking lot, and they tell you no. So we would have a situation where, depending on the parking lot, the city may or may not have an obligation to maintain it. And I wonder if a public office, recorder of deeds, DMV decides to put up some nice pictures and let the public come in and look at them, is their parking lot now immune from liability? I think it encourages the government to not be accountable for its negligence. And I think it's a step too far when we say, okay, a public library is a recreational facility, and now we're going to include the sidewalks and the parking lot.
In truth, though, haven't we already recognized that and dealt with that? To say if the recreational aspect is incidental, it doesn't count. And when you're talking about going and paying your taxes or getting a driver's license and they have art on the wall, isn't that really incidental?
It depends. And I think that's part of the problem. We don't really have any real guiding principle here about where this recreational use immunity stops. I mean, if we want to talk about this specific case, the parking lot that is connected to the Monticello Branch Public Library has one road coming into it. And so that would obviously be integral to getting into the library, the one single road. So now, do we have recreational use immunity for the sole road that leads into the library? And incidentally, that road is connected to a single road that goes out to the main road. So now, we've actually got two roads, but there's only one way into the library. So now, do both those roads, until we get to the main road? Are they also exempt? We don't have, we don't have any kind of a guiding principle. And we can see, when we looked at the progression from the Jackson case and from when we, you know, when the court first said, okay, an indoor basketball, an indoor basketball court is going to be a recreational use, and we're going to give that immunity. But from that point, the court said, well, you know, we're not saying a cafeteria, we're not saying a library, and now we are, and now we're saying parking lots, too. And it's.
More questions.
And so I.
I'll let, your time is far past.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've asked several questions. If you'd like to just quickly summarize before you sit down in this phase.
Absolutely. So just a quick summary, I want to encourage this court to get back to fidelity to the Constitution, because I think this statute, particularly as it is so broadly construed, violates Section 5 and 18 of the Kansas Constitution. But it is also a statute that needs to be reined in, back to the text that the court gave us. And I briefed more thoroughly, and I won't talk about it now, but there are issues in how the summary judgment was handled and the court's, lower court's refusal to allow us to amend our petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holder?
May it please the Court, Andrew Holder, on behalf of the Appellate, the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas. The principal issue that is properly before this court is whether the Kansas Court of Appeals correctly applied the Kansas Tort Claims Act recreational use immunity section to the Johnson County Library. The contention that we've been hearing is that recreational use immunity, according to its text, should only apply to outdoor spaces. The primary issue with that contention is that it runs contrary to binding precedent by this court, beginning with the Jackson case that was decided in 2000, where the court said that it defied common sense to find that recreational use immunity was limited only to outdoor spaces.
Counsel, can I ask you a few questions about that decision? Because that's really the heart of the question here in terms of recreational use immunity. I believe that opposing counsel's position can't be reconciled with that Jackson decision. Yet at the same time, there is a logical, some would say persuasive, argument that if we were deciding that anew, the way this court has remained adherent to a plain language interpretation, we look at the dictionary definitions of open area, and that excludes buildings and structures, right? So if we were deciding this anew, that could be a very persuasive argument. We're not. We've got a 25-year period, a quarter of a century, where we have that Jackson decision interpreted to the contrary. So we would have to reverse that decision. I understand the argument as to why, when we depart from our precedents, stare decisis, we go through two steps. First, we ask whether the Jackson court got it wrong. I understand the argument there. But then we also ask whether more good than harm would come about by overturning the decision. And I guess my question is, what is your view on? And I guess my question is, what is your view on that second prong of a stare decisis argument as to why departing from Jackson would produce more harm than good? Is, are there reliance interests that have developed over this last 25 years, for example?
No question there are. I think one of the examples that the court pointed to is indoor swimming pools. We've got plenty of indoor swimming pools and other recreational facilities, gymnasiums, theaters, those are the kinds of things that under precedent are already recognized. And just briefly on the issue of stare decisis, because as far as that goes, I think it also bears mention that when we're talking about the plain text of this, what this court has said is that stare decisis is particularly compelling where the legislature can amend the statute in response to a decision but decides not to do so. So when we're talking about what is the plain meaning of, of the phrase "open area," the fact that the court reached the decision it did in Jackson and that the legislature for 25 years now has not spoken up and said, that's not what we meant when we said "open area," has to be particularly compelling here. But to, to circle back to your question, there are myriad indoor facilities that rely on Jackson and his progeny to say recreational use immunity applies indoors.
And those government entities you're suggesting made that capital investment in part based on the assumption that they would not be then exposed to liability under the, based on that exception to the Torque Claims Act?
I don't think it's an assumption. The, the court told us that explicitly in Jackson. But yes. So with regard to, to the question of how do we interpret the phrase "open area," I think that there are, you know, the court starts with the plain meaning. And I think that counsel and I have pointed out, there, there may be more than one reasonable plain meaning interpretation of the phrase "open area." And what we also know is that there's not a lot of legislative history to tell us which of those two plain meaning interpretations is the correct one, whether it means open to the public or whether it means outdoors.
Help me with the scope here of, of your reading of the statute and partly how we've interpreted it, but it's, I guess, why isn't any public building covered under the recreational use immunity? I had the privilege of conducting a tour of this building, the Capitol Building, to the Boys and Girls Club. We climbed to the top of the Capitol Building, or to the top of the dome. Believe me, that exerted, that took some exertion, at least on my part. Would that qualify then as a kind of a recreational use immunity for this building? For any library, for a museum? Where, where, where does it stop or where does it end? It does seem to me that it does, given your broad interpretation of, of the immunity.
Well, I think that what the court has told us is that the line where it stops is whether the recreation is incidental or whether it, it's beyond incidental. That, that's the line. It's, there's no quantifiable position. With regard to, for example, the Lane case, which involved the Atchison Conference Center, what the court said is that the recreational use was beyond incidental, even though there were statistics that were in front of the court that suggested the actual use of that property was something to the effect of 78% for private conferences and business meetings and that kind of stuff. So when we're talking about this case in light of that, if you're talking about a space that's used somewhere around 20% of the time for recreation, and you're also talking about recreational use immunity being applied to the loading dock outside of a place used for only 20% for recreational purposes, when we're talking about a public library parking lot, we're really not talking about an expansion of recreational use beyond where we already were under the Lane case. But to Mr. Moorefield's point, you know, if you've got the DMV and they're playing music and people are enjoying the music, I think there's a pretty good argument that that would be incidental and, and wouldn't fall under recreational use immunity. We've not had that case, but that's where, that would be the argument there.
I guess I'm having trouble with why not? If you're, you go to a concert and you're dancing, why isn't that part of the, part of the kind of the equation that we would assess whether it's recreational use or not? It's just getting very broad, and I'm having difficulty kind of define, putting limitation on this.
Well, and, and the language of the statute is broad. What it says is any property that's used for those purposes. So I think we start with the legislature's, the text of the statute being broad. And, and that's what this court has said, which is that recreational use immunity should be applied broadly to achieve the purpose of ensuring that recreational facilities are developed. The other point with regard to recreational use immunity that I want to touch on is this concept that there was no recreation going on in the parking lot. I wholeheartedly agree there was no recreation going on in the parking lot specifically, but dating back to the Wilson versus Kansas State case, which involved somebody that suffered chemical burns on a toilet inside the football stadium, what the court says is, again, we've got to look at the plain text of the statute. What the statute says is any property that's used for recreational use, not any portion of any property used for recreational use. And what the appellant is asking you to do here is revise what the text of the statute says and, and really go back to only the portion of the property that's actually used for recreational purposes. And that goes contrary to Wilson and Nichols and a whole variety of other cases that talk about the fact that you can't section off specific parts of the property. We're talking about a, a parking lot dedicated solely to this library. There's no question that that parking lot was integral and necessary to the library. People wouldn't be able to access the library here without that parking lot. So it falls squarely within the court's precedent as far as that goes.
Well, how would you address counsel's argument that why not include the road? It's the only access to the parking lot that gets you to the library, and how far does that go?
Well, I think it's got to be part and parcel of the same property, and it, you know, it falls back to the confines of whether it's incidental to it or not. The contours of, of the rule are it's got to be integral and necessary to it. I think that when you get that far removed, we're, we're beyond integral and necessary to the property itself. So, you know, if you're talking about a sidewalk that leads to a parking lot that leads to the library, we're too far removed. But if you're talking about the parking lot that's part of the library property and that is used exclusively for the library, we're squarely within the confines of the precedent that's already been established.
Can I turn your attention to the, the constitutional claim? I would just like to hear your response to your opposing counsel's argument that there are cases that suggest that at common law, the state and its subdivisions did not enjoy governmental immunity.
I'd be happy to address that, Your Honor. I, I'll start by saying that the entire constitutional argument that we're talking about here should not be reached and it should be determined to be waived. This was not something that was raised at the district court level, at the court of appeals level, at the petition for review stage. This is something that only got brought up for the first time as part of the supplemental briefing under Supreme Court Rule 8.03. It was required to be included in the petition for review if it was going to be considered. It wasn't. So I'll, I'll start with that preface, and then I'll address your question. With respect to that contention, I wholeheartedly disagree with any claim that at common law in Kansas, joined the union, there was not sovereign immunity. With regard to the specific case that was cited, that case involved a city and the Kansas Territorial Supreme Court finding that under that city's territorial charter, because it was authorized to build and grade roads, it was responsible for those roads. I would point the court to the Eckenberry decision, which is decided somewhere between five and 10 years after that, where the court actually differentiates between cities, which are municipal corporations, and counties and townships, which it considered, I believe, quasi municipal corporations. And in that case, what it said is, those are treated differently than cities, they're not liable for negligence. So what we're talking about with regard to, to the City of Leavenworth case is a narrow exception to sovereign immunity that applied to cities only and only in the context of roads and sidewalks. So I completely disagree that at common law, a county like Johnson County could be liable for negligence. And under the analysis that we're talking about here, if sovereign immunity existed at common law in 1859, Section 5 and Section 18 don't apply. The other issues that I have with that argument, number one, when we're talking about Section 5, we're talking about procedurally who decides the specific issues of the case. We're not, we don't reach Section 5 here. We're only talking about Section 18 because we're talking about the substantive, what does the law allow recovery for? So I don't think Section 5 has any implication in this case whatsoever. So when you talk about Section 18 specifically, then you get into how do we evaluate a challenge if its protections apply? And even under Hillburn, which only reached Section 5, the quid pro quo test still applies to Section 18 challenges. The briefing in this case doesn't, from the appellant, doesn't talk anything about the quid pro quo analysis that would apply here. So I think ultimately where we're left with is a dead end. The long answer to a short question.
Can I ask you a quick question about the, the record? And maybe it's the, the third issue that, as I under, was discovery closed by the time the summary judgment briefing occurred? And, and the reason I'm asking is about the, as I understand it, there's a motion to amend to maybe develop the only theory that would have survived Torque Claims Act scrutiny under our Jackson and case law, our court's current case law. So I'm just curious, where, what, where were the parties at in terms of discovery at that point?
Discovery had closed, and the motion to amend took place after the motion for summary judgment was filed. And so for that, I would point the court, there's a court of appeals opinion, it's Tolles versus Pittsburgh State University, that talks about that specific issue and, and the fact that a motion to amend in response to an argument made in summary judgment is not improper, and the district court doesn't err by refusing to allow that a motion to amend.
And the, the evidence that was developed in the summary judgment record, from your perspective, certainly didn't have evidence to support a finding of gross negligence?
That's absolutely correct. When we talk about gross and wanton conduct, you're talking about a step above and beyond general negligence. You've got to have a realization of imminent danger and a failure, a conscious decision not to do anything in response to that. And so the, the appellant raised really two points of evidence in support of a finding of gross and wanton. Number one, there is a curb in front of the library, not in the parking lot, that got painted yellow because there were patrons that were having a difficult time differentiating where the sidewalks stopped, where the curb ended and the road began. That's a totally separate area and a totally separate issue than what happened here. The evidence with respect to Ms. Zaragoza is that she understood that the curb was ending and she was stepping down into the sidewalk. She just didn't understand the grade of the parking lot where she was stepping. So it's a completely separate issue. The evidence on that also reflects that the library had thousands upon thousands of patrons. There was never a single reported complaint of anybody having an issue of the sort that she had in the area. She had her really anywhere in the parking lot. So that, that is insufficient for a finding of gross and wanton. The other evidence was that there were blueprints that reflected a bush in the mulch that Ms. Zaragoza walked through that on the day in question didn't exist. There's nothing in the record that says whether that bush was ever planted, if so, what happened to it from that time on. And so again, when we're talking about gross and wanton, we have to be talking about evidence that the county knew that without that bush there, it was imminent that people were going to step down, wouldn't recognize the grade, and would hurt themselves. There's nothing like that in the record. So procedural issues aside, both the district court and the court of appeals reached the substantive evidentiary question of is there a submissible case for gross and wanton? And they both correctly found that there wasn't.
Can you help me here? I, I mean, when we, we first reviewed the petition for review, looked at this, and now we've delved into the briefs, but I still can't get to the, my initial reaction was, and it still is, is do you think the legislature really had in mind when it, when it adopted a statute passed into law, a recreational use immunity that includes the language permitted to be used as a park, playground, or open area for recreational purposes? Do you really think they meant a library? I mean, I, and, and maybe I'm, I'm showing my age, but when I went to the library, it was a place you had to be quiet. It's a place you had, in fact, I was told to be quiet on numerous occasions. But I, I can't imagine that that's what they had in mind. And part of the problem is we don't know from what was discussed when the statute was enacted, but do you really think they meant a library when they're talking about a park, playground, open area for recreational purposes? It just seems to defy the whole intent of what the, kind of the purpose of the recreational use immunity is and its narrow scope. It just, we've really taken it far from that. But tell me why a library, and I understand your argument is, well, now they have different activities at the library and those kinds of things, but it just doesn't seem to fit with what was intended.
Well, I would start out with the general representation that when I take my kids to the library to check out Pete the Cat, we're recreating, we're not doing it for a thesis project. So I do think there's some recreation in there. And the legislature used the word recreation.
Do you see that as the same function as going to the park or playing football?
I do, yeah. It's spending time doing things for fun. And what I would say is that the legislature used the word recreation, they didn't use the word physical activity. So if what they had in mind was sledding down a hill or baseball, they could have used that word, and they didn't do it. And not only did they not do it, but when this court said, open area includes indoor spaces, they didn't react by saying, no, that's not what we meant.
Mr. Holder, your time has expired. If you'd like to summarize?
In short summary, I would ask that the court affirm the decision by the court of appeals and find that the recreational use immunity was appropriately applied here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moorefield, you reserve three minutes.
May it please the Court. I want to start by addressing some of the procedural issues and some of the discovery issues that, that were discussed in the previous argument, because I think there are some errors that were made, and I'd like to direct the court's attention to the record. First of all, when the answer in this case was filed, the affirmative defense was Kansas Torque Claims Act. There was no mention of the recreational use immunity. We filed interrogatories and requests for production that asks, asked for witnesses and documents relating to the affirmative defenses. Nothing was produced relating to recreational use immunity. We sent out requests for admissions, and we specifically asked about the paint on the curb next to the library, and we were told that there was no safety reason for that paint. It was a no parking zone. We had scheduled the corporate representative depositions of several of the defendant's corporate representatives. One of them got sick. We agreed to reschedule the deposition to a more convenient date. That date was after the close of discovery. During that deposition, the corporate representative, who was an architect, by the way, who was involved in building the building, said, oh, no, we did paint that curb because it was dangerous, and I even have a problem with that at my age. And what we are talking, there was also expert testimony that is talked about in the record on appeal. We had an expert, human factors expert, an architect, who testified that this area where Ms. Zaragoza fell, it was a step down from the sidewalk down onto the parking lot, and there was a slope because it was right near a drainage area. And that was inconspicuous and indiscernible, something that would have been solved by applying yellow paint, the same yellow paint that was applied maybe 15 to 20 yards away next to the building. This is a parking lot that the defendant has insisted to you is integral, integral to the recreational use of the library, and yet they claim it's a completely different situation not to correct a problem that they were aware of, that they denied, and that was concealed from the plaintiff until after the close of discovery. And then they object to a motion to amend. Now gross and wanton negligence is negligence where there is a, the, the party knows that there's a danger, and they make a choice not to fix it. They knew about this danger. Now, this court might ask...
How did they know about the danger? I mean, you know, when opposing counsel was up here, he said that the issue that they were talking about, and then, you know, the architect that testified, whatever, is stepping down from a curb, right? And your client testified that that wasn't the issue for her at all. She knew she was stepping down from a curb.
Yes.
So I don't really understand how they knew the slope, because it's the slope that you have an issue with, right?
Well, it's, it's the slope and it's the step down, and I'll try to articulate this as well as I can, but... well as I can, but what the problem was, because of the new concrete, it was really difficult to tell where, how far the step down was. I mean, normally you have visual signals, like, you know, if I were to step down off of this table, there's, you know, there's a visual signal that you can see difference in color, difference in texture, et cetera. And that same problem existed where Ms. Zaragoza fell. And so what the point and what the architect testified to is that this yellow paint is a visual signal. And so that same visual signal that's necessary for the safety of pedestrians was missing in the place where Ms. Zaragoza was injured, the same visual signal that they corrected right next to the building. Now, what would a jury do? I don't know. But the door to the courthouse, the door to the jury box has been locked for us because the district court took upon itself to decide that it didn't think that that was gross and wanton. But as the Gruean versus Overland Park case tells us, a Court of Appeals opinion, but that's a jury issue. That's a fact issue.
You said this at the beginning, and I'd love to see if I could find it very quickly, but when did they put forth the affirmative defense of recreational use immunity at one point?
They never did. The first time we learned about the recreational use immunity was when they filed for summary judgment.
Is that considered an affirmative defense?
It is.
And so was there any objection below about failure to raise an affirmative defense? I mean, normally, don't you have to raise that in a pleading?
And they raised the Kansas Torque Claims Act. I want to be clear about that. I do not want to overstate, so the affirmative defense said, based on the Kansas Torque Claims Act, but as the court knows, you know, the recreational use immunity was Section O.
Right.
And there were several afters. So there's about 20 different immunities.
Which other ones would have applied?
The design exception. And that's actually what I thought they were talking about. They hired an expert on the design issue, and that wasn't actually the direction we were going.
So during discovery, did you ask at all which subsection they were going to?
Well, yes, we asked for discovery on, for any documents or information that would support recreational use. And one thing I'll point out.
You did say that.
Well, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We asked that supported their affirmative defenses, and nothing came out about recreational use. And then when we were responding to the summary judgment, we attached portions of their website that described the library as an educational institution, and they objected to that. But frankly, if they were going to argue that the library had a recreational use, that was material that should have been produced by them in response to discovery. But there was nothing produced in discovery that had anything to do with recreational use.
And I know you're out of time, but I did want to give you one chance to respond to my questions to your opposing counsel, why we should overturn the Jackson decision. I understand, remember, there's a two-step process. I understand your argument as to why Jackson was wrongly decided, but I'm interested in why more good than harm would come about by overturning that decision, particularly your opposing counsel's arguments about the reliance interest of these government institutions that have made significant capital investments on the assumption that this immunity would be available.
Yeah, one of the things I'd point out is that, like the court mentioned in Noel versus Menninger, you know, at this point with insurance and everything else, there are many ways to handle those risks. But I think the downside is, well, let me start over. Okay. There are several ways the court can approach this. One of them is to say Jackson is wrong. It must be an outdoor facility. Another tack the court can take is that Wilson and its progeny were wrong. We're not going to include adjacent areas. We're not going to include things like that. And even if this court were to uphold the Jackson case, even if an indoor basketball court is a recreational facility or an indoor swimming pool, that doesn't mean that a public library is a recreational facility or that defendant adequately proved that it was. And so there are ways to clean up the law surrounding recreational use immunity without upsetting the apple cart for every government entity.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
So if we pretend Arrowhead Stadium is in Kansas, you know, when you go tailgate, you know, I don't know if you've ever been, but it's a whole three-hour thing. You're playing football in the parking lot, people are, you know, making food, and, I mean, it's just crazy recreational. So what you would say even then?
Oh, I would distinguish that, because, you know, what you have just described is recreation in the parking lot. But in our case, the defendant admitted that there was no recreational purpose, intention, or use of that parking lot. So it'd be.
Did you say the same about the Chiefs parking lot?
What's that? Well, no, the Chief.
You say the use, but where do we, where would we draw the line?
Well, I think.
Like, how much has to go on? You know, because we're going to maybe decide this case, well, we are going to decide this case.
Yes.
But, you know, and then, you know, as cases come down, you know, where do you draw the line?
Sure.
Between the library that you're talking about here and the Chiefs parking lot?
Well, the test is park, playground, or open area, which the Chiefs parking lot would be, intended or permitted to be used for recreation. And the Chiefs parking lot is permitted to be used for recreation. The Chiefs stadium is primarily active one day a week for, you know, the fall, for the football season. But when it's open, the parking lot is active for recreation, but Johnson County Library is not.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to both counsel for your arguments this evening. The court will now take this matter under advisement.